Good evening. Today is Wednesday, November 6, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
Councilmember Smith is not with us this evening. City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
City assessor.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Community development director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete. Thank you. We have an amendment to the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add item eight, new business? Consideration of authorizing Ayers Basement System to perform the fire station crawl space repairs, allowing action by city council on this additional item.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Public carries, we have none. Citizens' comments on agenda-related items for five minutes. A consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters prior to approval. Any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, balance sheet. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Now we have a presentation by Ken Tausma of Anderson-Tackman on the June 30, 2024 audit. Okay, Ken, I've got the graphs up. Do you want to put them up on yours? Do you want to share a screen or?
I can try to share my screen, I guess.
Okay.
I'll work out the... Do they pop up?
I've got them on my screen, so if that works for you, I didn't pop up in yours. Let me try to make this bigger and maximize. There we go. Now they're coming up. Yep, now they're coming up. And I'm going to try to turn up the volume here.
Okay. I'll try to pop louder, too.
There we go.
First off, appreciate the council having me here to present the 2024 audit results. Our audit manager, Tori Cruz, had a meeting with the audit committee a few weeks ago, and I think was provided a real in-depth, more thorough of details of all the audit and the process and the outcomes. I'm going to kind of give more of a broad overview of the audit. Obviously, the biggest piece or most important thing is the opinion on the financial statements from the audit. At the end of gathering all of our evidence, performing testing, making sure that all the standards are followed, met, all the principles are followed, we give our yay or nay on the financial statements and its accuracy. And we opine with or give the opinion of modified again for 2024, meaning everything was done correctly and you're following all the points of presentation and also being able to find all the different evidence and agreements and confirmations and things from third parties to say that everything's reliable in your financial statements. It's also got the graphic presentation, which we've used in the last few years.
Ken, we're just seeing a K in the middle of the screen right now.
Okay. I'll just, I'll speak of the page, and if you want to show them.
Sure, I can do that.
The first, obviously, the first one is the, should be the second slide showing the assets and deferred outflows of the city.
Yes, got it.
So all of those, you've kind of had a pretty solidly comparable year from '24 to '23. So all, you know, the different balances for the city stayed pretty comparable and healthy. You know, your cash, your investments, receivables for things owed due from, which are other receivables from different federal state grants, other assets like inventories and prepaid insurances. And then, like usual for the city and for most cities, a lot of what your assets are are the different capital assets that provide services for the citizens, like the water sewer systems, other infrastructure of the city, other capital things. They're from equipment like trucks and on-end loaders, all those different things. So those are your assets, and again, everything's pretty comparable. The second or the third slide moving forward now shows, looks show the liabilities or your deferred inflows or deferred revenues, and those are also pretty comparable. The only one that kind of dipped down is your bonds payable. I think we had no debt this year, and we just had the scheduled payoff of or payments made of the existing. So that went from about $36.5 million to about $34.9. So that decreases by making the regular principal and interest payments. Otherwise, everything's, you know, staying pretty level for the year. The next slide would be the net position, or it's kind of like the consolidated fund balance of the city. And that's broken into the three parts, and the government finance officer kind of, and the GAZB came up with this, three categories of being in the mandatory categories. Again, a lot of your net position is tied up in the capital assets that you own to provide services, and that stayed pretty level at $26 million. You also have a piece that's what we call restricted, and it's kind of, what we mean by restricted is it's got to be earmarked or used for particular purposes if there's anything left at the end of the year. For example, like the major local street money, as you get that state money, that's anything left at the year has got to be kind of kept in that bucket for those public works expenses moving forward. Another example is anytime you have millages or grant monies, and some of that money gets left to the end of the year and not spent, it's got to be kept in that bucket, and it's got to be used for something in particular. It's not what we call general use. And then what's left is the general use, and that decreased a little bit to about $592,000, but we also had kind of like an increase in the restricted parts, I think, just a kind of movement of the net position. But again, even though it's restricted, that is covering the different needs of the city in different areas, like we say, you know, public works for the major local streets as well as it could be things like reserves for the water and sewer funds and these things. So that does cover those things. The next area looking at is the revenues of the, all the government funds, which your general or your operating fund is the biggest one. Then you also have special funds, like the major local streets. You have your oil and gas fund. I think other special revenue and capital product funds round that out. But again, everything's pretty comparable by most of the categories. Two probably important highlights is the federal. We kind of had more in '22, I believe with like ARPA money, and then '23, a smaller part, and then not so much of that this year. So that decreased. And also interesting is the investment earnings. So with the oil and gas fund and those monies that are put in for that principal point to earn money, '22 wasn't such a good year, it kind of went negative. '23 rebound was better. And '24 was even better with the stock market where those monies are invested. So that was an improvement for this year. That did, you know, again, better earnings for those funds. So that's pretty much the bright side for the revenues. Otherwise, everything's pretty comparable. The next graph is the expenditures of all those government funds. And we break them into what we call functional expenditures or areas, and those are general government, which includes the kind of the general operations of the city, which has things like the Treasurers Department, Clerks Department, Finance, Building, elections are usually in there, things like Assessor, General Operations. Then you have Public Safety, which is like police and fire. For example, maybe building inspection. Public Works, which is your DPW, Major Local Streets. You've got Community Economic Development, which landed $218,000. Rekt and Culture, usually like expenditures for parks and things. And you could have other, I think with the Charter of Accounts, they've kind of have assigned more things to the other areas, kind of decreasing the need to have that kind of other general description. Then you have capital, anything that's capital needs expenditures or for what we call fixed assets. We had more in the last two years in those areas, like everything about $2.5, $2.2 million, and only almost a million this year. So kind of not so much spent for capital stuff. Then your debt services stayed pretty level, and that's the principal interest paid out of the, you know, your government funds. And overall, your expenses are pretty even for the last three years. So it shows the city staying within its means. The next graph is the, I was talking about is the fund balance of the general fund, and that's kind of the, I guess, the big savings or the cushion of the city, the general fund being the biggest fund, and then the fund balance kind of staying healthy and kind of giving you a cushion for unforeseen expenditures. It also can protect you from when the state has mandates for services that are not funded. So you can afford some of those things if you deal with disasters sometimes. And even with grant, different grant programs, a lot of them are what they call reimbursement basis, meaning you've got to spend the money upfront and then wait to get repaid. So you need the cash flow to be able to do some of these projects sometimes. So it's good to have a healthy fund balance. And I think last year it went up a little bit. This year, we went down a little bit. But you're staying in that healthy level, which is a good thing. The government finance officers have like a floor that they recommend of 10% to 15% of the next year's budgeted expenditures and transfers out, and you're staying above that. So you're staying in a healthy place with your fund balance. And the only thing I always mention, too, is the state now, if you have three years in the role of decreases, they'll send a letter and say they're concerned or worried that maybe you're having, you're on a head toward a downward trend. So it's good you're kind of, your fund balance is kind of having, you know, slight increases and slight decreases, so it's kind of not developing any negative patterns. So it's staying healthy. So that's good news. We also have graphs on like the water and sewer and their revenues and expenditure, but everything's pretty comparable for those, too. Nothing too out of the ordinary. The only other thing I think of big differences, we didn't have to have what we call a single audit this year, as you've had the last several years, which currently you have federal money over 3/4 of a million dollars. So that was not needed this year. So a little bit less audit requirements and then work in that area for '24. Otherwise, I think, you know, one of the important things, too, that state looks at for health is like your taxable values seem to be staying healthy, having modest increases. So that's good. The pension is also always a point of interest. I think you're 67% funded. A little bit up from last time of 65%, so you're staying healthy in that area. The state goes off of 60%, kind of being their floor of being funded. So you're above that, and that's good. So a lot of these areas, you're remaining healthy, no negative fund balances. I think a pretty good audit for the city for 2024. Any questions?
No.
No. I don't hear any questions.
The only other thing I guess I got ahead of myself, I always add, is we do our audit. We always are required to kind of put things in three different buckets, if anything, we find. And I would say there's material weaknesses, which are kind of bigger problems, and the city didn't have any of that. There's significant deficiencies, which are kind of more medium-sized problems. Nothing to mention in that area. And then comments or recommendations are more, you know, kind of minor areas of things we find. And I think the only thing we brought up for '24 is there's some accounting standards that are going to change for next year. I think it's the compensated absences or the crew sick and vacation that's on the horizon to change for the '25 audit. So just kind of alerting everybody to that as well, making sure that finance has the chance to get whatever training or different resources they need to kind of look at that and be ready for that and working that into, you know, everything moving forward. But no real, no real big issues or, you know, comments or anything or deficiencies. So pretty clean audit.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you. I think we're all set. Ken, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I always add, we appreciate everybody at the city for their hard work in preparing everything and finding everything and getting us answers and digging up, you know, all the different evidence and documentation. It's a lot of work, and we appreciate everybody helping us and cooperating and being timely. And I always add, if anybody has any questions or anything of anything later, we're always available to answer those questions throughout the year, too. So appreciate your time, and thank you for another year.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye.
Consideration of annual audit committee report. The council audit committee is established by Section 23 of the City Council Guidelines. This section spells out duties and responsibilities of the committee. As part of the responsibilities, the audit committee prepares a written report on how the committee discharged its duties and responsibilities. At this time, council could take action to accept the annual report of the council audit committee. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yep. Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of Budget Amendment 2025-1 for fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. The City of Manistee is required by state law to ensure that actual expenditures do not exceed budgeted amounts over the course of a current fiscal year. Unanticipated and unbudgeted events and/or council-approved expenditures have occurred. These proposed budget amendments address expenditures associated with these events to ensure compliance with state statutes regarding appropriations. At this time, council could take action to adopt Budget Amendment 2025-1 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
For a second. I'll second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Can we get a little bit of information in regards to the amendment for the Ramsdale and for the Major Street? So the Ramsdale's original budget was zero, and now it's projected to be 12.
So the Ramsdale had an issue with the chiller and boiler system, and our contract with the RRCA is any repair over $7,500 is the city's responsibility. So it was a repair that needed to take place, and we use our vendor of record, which is First Mechanical, to make that repair.
Okay, so the 12 doesn't account for their $7,500, right? Or does, like, does that combine?
So 12, it is increased from zero to 12. So that is the...
Right, and then they paid $7,500 on top of that.
Just repairs over $7,500, so the $12,000 is over $7,500.
Okay, so we're paying for that.
Correct, yeah.
Whole expense.
Full extent, yeah.
Okay, okay. And then the other one on the Major Street administration went from 9 to 15, fine.
Yes, so that was, we submitted for a shared streets and spaces grant. We worked with Spicer, and that was one where I authorized Spicer to work on it. We potentially could have received $300,000. So that was one that was authorized to potentially get that grant funds. I think the project planning that went into that is going to be helpful for the streetscape as well, but that's just basically that grant application work.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of revocation of Oprah Certificate 3-23-001. River Street Hotel LLC has requested that their obsolete property rehabilitation act exemption be revoked as the project at 348 River Street is not moving forward, and the building is for sale. At this time, council could take action to revoke the Oprah Certificate 3-23-001 for 348 River Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Any discussion?
Bill, what happened with this thing?
My understanding is they did not get the historic tax credits. They needed to make it financially viable to do the project, so they are selling it. So part of that is we, when we granted the Oprah, they were supposed to have it complete by December 1, 2024. That's not happening. So the district will stay in place, but the certificate is going to, should be revoked.
Well, I figured after all the arguing we went through and all that to get it passed, and then to back out of this, maybe get the money.
Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of the sale of city-owned property located on Sixth Avenue, parcel 51-211-105-01. The city received an offer to purchase a city-owned Sixth Avenue property for the current asking price of $89,000. The prospective buyer indicated an interest in building multifamily housing on the property. The city is requesting a utility Riverwalk easement to eventually connect to the Riverwalk to the east of the property. At this time, council could take action to accept the offer and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the purchase agreement and all other necessary documents subject to the city attorney approval. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
For a second. Any discussion?
Bill, is there some reason why we keep selling all this property at such a cheap price?
So this one, we've had the city's own since 1935. Come to find out that, at the time, the DNR transferred it to us. We did end up talking with Mike Knutti, our agent. He, we talked about changing the prices. We've been sitting on these a long time. We had a couple of offers here and there when it was at $120. So the thought was to reduce the price to get some more movement on these.
What was the original price on this thing?
So it was listed for $120,000, and then it went down to this amount, and $89,000. And that's when we started to get, we received this offer.
But housing is good use for that.
It is. It's a nice location. It's a little challenging to build on, but we, I talked with the interested buyer, and they're, they kind of checked the setbacks and everything, and they're looking at doing multifamily housing there.
Did we ever plan on building that walk? I know years ago, they talked about it.
Yeah, so there's actually a 20-foot setback from the river, and there's actually a utility under there. So the 20 feet will be also reserved for Riverwalk easement, and we have a similar one by Edgewater. So that'll help connect, you know, Century Terrace, that area to the North Riverwalk.
I have a question. Would, so easement's kind of a, I don't know, people get really funny with that. Would there be any reason to just change the property than to do an easement, like the description? Like, you know how you can...
Change the...
Like, for the city to retain that rather than do an easement on it?
I suppose there's probably a couple of ways to do it, and it's just, we already have an example easement that we have to the other side and many on the south side. So that's been the way we've done it, but I'm sure there's other ways to do it as well.
Just a point that came to mind with that. If you move that property back that 20 or 25 feet so that we retain the riverfrontage, then it's not riverfront property, number one, so it's taxed differently. And then, number two, then the setbacks apply from that. So you end up losing a lot of potentially buildable land. Just a thought.
It's a good point.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
No.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
I'll say yes, but I think we're losing a lot.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of approving a streetlight contract amendment with Consumers Energy. Four existing metal streetlight poles along Maple between River and Water Street have been determined to be structurally unsafe by Consumers Energy. Two poles have been removed, and the remaining two have been de-energized. Consumers is proposing to replace the poles with new wood poles and LED lighting. Changes require an authorizing resolution from the city council. There is no cost to the city for this work. At this time, city council could take action to approve a resolution authorizing the change in standard contract with the Consumers Energy. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yep. Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of a purchase of a pickup truck for the Department of Public Works. A pickup has been scheduled for replacement in the current fiscal year budget at $55,000. The city received a M. I. Deal quote for Gornell Ford in the amount of $51,971. The truck would replace an existing truck that is 16 years old. At this time, council could take action to approve the purchase of a new pickup truck from Gornell Ford in the amount of $51,971. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? Heather, would you?
Jeff, is it really, I mean, I see it 16 years old, and I know you've come before us with these requests before us. How many trucks are in the 2020 range?
I'd have to refer back to our schedule. We have been trying to schedule these out for 12- to 14-year replacements. I think there's probably 15, 16 of these pickups. When they get to the end of their life, they get evaluated by the mechanic every year during the budget process. If he thinks it can last another year, we push it and don't request it. If he thinks it's going to have some failures within that year, then we request it. We purchased a pickup truck last year, same condition. The pickup truck that we're requesting to replace today was actually the one we were going to replace last year, but a different truck had a failure on the fuel system. So as opposed to taking a truck that was working out of service, we took that truck out of service, and that's being auctioned off right now, and then we deferred this another year. So by the time they get to the end of them, they're ready to be, they're tired and ready to go.
I remember when you came with that request.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any else? Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac. Motion approved. Thank you. Considerations of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Compensation Commission, Harbor Commission, and PAG Commission. Mayor and manager appointments require a motion. Second, council voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives the majority support. The following applications have been received. Harbor, one vacancy term ending 10/31/27. Appointments advisory on Marina and Harbor development issues, council appointments. At this, sorry, is there a nomination?
I'll nominate Michael Lenz of Third Hundred Vine Street for the vacancy ending on 10/31/27.
Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Nomination approved. Thank you. Consideration of authorizing Ayers Basement System to perform fire station crawl space repairs. Recent restoration work on the Manistee Fire Station has uncovered water and high moisture levels within the station crawl space that have been going on for many years. Despite several attempts to resolve the issues, including the installation of plastic and gravel and ventilation fan, and the repair of the floor joists, the problem persists. After obtaining two quotes from qualified companies, Ayers Basement System is recommended as the most effective with a quote for $31,000. is recommended as most effective with a quote for 31,390,41. To prevent further damage to ensure the health and safety of the fire station included in the quote is replacing floor joists, installing two sub pumps, draining matting, clean space liner and dehumidifier. At this time, council could take action to authorize Ayers basement system to perform fire station crawl space repairs and allow the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Is there a motion?
Make demo.
For a second. Any discussion? I just have one question. Are they offering, like, they offer the lifetime warranty? Are you getting that?
Yeah. So, uh, for like the floor joists repair and the jacks that they use, that those do have a lifetime warranty on it. The other liners that they're going to put in to eliminate the other, uh, to eliminate the other moisture areas and that type of stuff, I believe those have a 25 year warranty.
Okay. Anybody else?
Is that the one you showed me when I was older?
Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, o- over the course of time, some of the floor joists were replaced. These are the oldest floor joists that were never replaced. They're under the stairwell and that type of area, right there.
That one when you took off the wall, there was a paint added, the water was coming down in there.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. So, uh, once this repair is complete, all of the floor joists will be, uh, finished in the crawl space of the fire station. So, um, it should be ready for the next hundred years. So.
Joists is wood or metal?
Uh, wood joists, the wood joists. They're going to put a metal beam across, uh, on the foundation, the exterior wall side with, uh, some additional jacking. So that's actually going to be supporting and not the exterior wall.
Okay.
So, but, yeah.
Any else? Heather, would you please take a roll? Thank you.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Citizens comment, this is an opportunity for citizens and attendants to comment on municipal services, activities or other areas of city involvement limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
Excuse my voice. Wow.
I sound the same.
It's nothing contagious.
I sound the same. It's okay.
All right. Um, I'm just here on behalf, we had a newspaper article, on behalf of these short term rentals.
Can you state your name and address?
Pardon?
Can you state your name and address?
Oh, my name is David Gramsa. Uh, address is 290 Fourth Street, Manistee. Uh, I lived here all my life. Uh, I, I used to own a short term rental. I had it just for a couple of years and I sold it. And what I wanted, where to get this to the council is taking consideration of positives of the short term rentals. Um, there's only, according to Sammy from the business convention barrel, there's only about, uh, 1,200 rooms, members in the whole county. And if you want to get down to 30, was what the goal was, the short term rentals, you're really taking away a lot of positive lodging coming out of town. And from my experience, I had a lot of people come, stayed for four days, spent a lot of money. It trickles down, you know, to the waitresses, the charter boat operators. It just brings a lot of money to the community. And I'm concerned that it's going to send a, a negative message for any future investors. Myself, I invested a lot of money in it and 401K and everything else. I took a house that was deteriorated. Now you take these houses, some of them in Manistee, as we know, people put short term rentals, they took a lot of money in them and they took deteriorating houses, made a nice house out of them. And the market, if you don't have, but you have a lot of competition right now, if you eliminate the competition by going down to 30 people, 30 houses, then there's not going to be the incentive for the, um, short term operators to keep the houses and their property up to snuff. And I just don't want to have the message sent out to other communities that Manistee's not open for business. Because somebody come in here and they say, oh, I, you know, I put a bunch of money into it and now I can't sell it as a short term rental. So when you build a business up and you put your money into it and you make a lot of income, you're going to be able to sell that house for a little more money than what it's appraised for. And that's the incentive and that helps everybody. But if you restrict that, you're punishing the person that put that money into that house and not able to sell it as a short term rental. So what, what my, uh, motivation is, is for the council, I got friends, we're going to go to the next meeting, that we looked at other short term rentals throughout the community or, or region and what they do, what they did. And I think, I know we're going to have an ordinance and, but I think some of the, um, points that were in the ordinance that was talked about, discussed are a little restrictive. And, um, I just want to be a first person to say some of the positive things towards the short term rentals and everything being, instead of everything being negative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge and thank the clerk's office, Laura and Heather for their work on the election along with the staff, candidates, um, everything that went into it. And I'd like to thank the outgoing council members for, uh, their service to the city. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Bachman.
Yes, my last day. It's been fun being here, but it's fun leaving. No regrets. I'm confident that, um, the seat will be well represented and you'll get good service out of my, uh, the person who won is Julia Raditz. And I kind of like one of those DPW trucks. It's time to move on and... Thank you very much.
Slumber.
Uh, nothing.
Mr. Pratt.
Um, I just had two things. Um, I had a resident reach out in regards to street signs still down in their yard up on Sixth Street. So like it's a stop sign. They're like, I don't know.
We just discussed that this morning. It's on the punch list for the contract, but we discussed, I'm just going to have my guys go pick them up.
Okay. Cause they actually asked, like, can I drop it off at DPW? And I said, please don't do that.
Yeah. It's, it's a pay item for the contractor, but I'm just going to go grab them.
Okay. And then, I mean, that's something for the next group of city council members to consider, but blight seems to be a big concern right now. Like driving around, there's mattresses out. I, I don't know. I, I mean, I don't know that we've gotten a great handle on it. We've done a lot of steps, but I don't know if that's something to kind of go back and look at the ordinance and consider. I mean, some people have had things sitting out for like five months now in their yard. So it, it's a lot for a part-time blight officer. So I'm not, I'm not faulting anybody for that. I'm just saying, like, we might need to look at the approach to that because lots of people call about blight and they're just saying, like, what do we do about it? So I encourage them to continue to see, click, fix or reach out to the city. But even driving around this past couple of weeks, I'm like, wow, there, there is a lot just kind of sitting out in people's yards. So I, I felt like we've done a lot with educating people, but I don't know if it's just the time of year or, or what's going on. But, um, aside from that, I just want to thank all the, uh, candidates that ran. I'm very interested and eager to see what new ideas and perspectives they'll bring to council. And I just want to thank the citizens of Manistee for allowing me to serve them. So, thank you.
Mr. Grabowski.
Well, I have a couple of things there. Are, are we getting another marijuana grow on Manistee Street, Bill?
I'm sorry, could you say that one more time?
Pardon?
Are we having another marijuana grow? Is that?
Yeah. It says in the newsletter.
Oh. Yeah, we did receive a grow application, yes, at 1009 Manistee Street. So I believe the, you know, the departments are reviewing that application right now.
I remember years ago, somebody applied for a grow deal and that went barn, but I didn't know, I thought it just dropped off and didn't come back.
They'd been investing in that property to, and they submitted an application.
Okay. Are we doing anything? I mean, I, we talked about this PAG commission and that trying to put something in the new school when it gets running, but people are really calling me. They're, they want, you know, they'd like to see something now. They're, they're tired of waiting for that.
And since I sent that update to council on Friday, I did reach out to Ron, is there any space in the existing school area? And he thought there might be a possibility. So once Barry gets back, um, we're going to schedule a meeting. Um, we're going to try to schedule a meeting with Ron to see if we can take a look at the space, see if it'll work.
People don't get a chance to get out. So they're, they're calling me. Um, the NRBC is working on different projects. And we were going to work on the fire hydrant. And then they were told they couldn't do that. Uh, we had the paint all scheduled to be in. We had the brushes. Why are we taking, stopping volunteers from work, Jeff?
On the fire hydrants?
On the fire hydrants.
Because that's a normal duty that the, uh, water department completes.
How many do they do a year?
I don't have a number.
Well, you know, and I walk around, I know Seth walks around. There's a lot of hydrants. I mean, they, if the guys are going to work on tables during the winter and on hydrants and all that, that's a lot of work. So people are willing to volunteer and put their time in to help them out. I mean, and the union was telling me, oh yeah, we'll file a grievance. And I said, go ahead, because I think that's a ridiculous grievance when you get involved, you ask for volunteers, and I know it's in some of these papers, tell you ask for volunteers and then we shut them down. And I'd like to see volunteers doing some work. So I, I don't know who can, wants to answer that, but it's, it's sad that we, we volunteer, ask for them and then we don't use them.
Anything else, Jeff?
That's it.
Jeff, probably should have stayed up there.
Come back, Jeff.
Since it's my last meeting, I'll have to ask, um, update on the bridge?
Bill and I just got a email from the state today. Um, obviously they closed it for five days. They opened it a little bit shorter than what they had expected. All the, all the rivets are in, the bolts are being replaced. Will either be done, are either done now or will be done tomorrow morning. Um, they've been working on window and glass replacements in the bridge house. Um, they did impressions. So when that bridge rocks, they replace the bearing parts, the steel parts on that. So now that the bridge is all complete, they're doing impressions. So think of it just like putting a special paper down, they rock on it and then they can see how those teeth are meshing. They said the south span passed and has been approved. The north span, they just submitted. Once that's approved, uh, then they will pour the concrete around those pieces and, uh, essentially will be done. So probably lane closures for another couple of weeks. Um, but the big stuff is done. Did I miss anything?
I think that's the bulk of it.
And it's functional. So.
They won't have to close the bridge at all, just the lane closure, right?
That's our understanding.
That's our understanding, yeah. But it is functioning for vessel traffic. So.
Okay. That's it?
Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for letting me serve. Been here eight and a half years. I was pregnant when I started. And so it's been a wild ride and I just, now I just got to focus on my kids. They're getting older. So, thank you.
Um, I just want to congratulate Ms. Raditz, uh, Ms. Lasky and Ms. Roska, and I will take